Welcome, everybody, to the Town of Somers Planning Board meeting. Tonight is Wednesday, February 12th, 2025. I'll ask that we all stand for the pledge.
The flag, United States of America.
America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
Peaceful and liberty and justice for all.
It's okay, you're right.
Yeah.
Better than the chair than him.
Okay. We have a remote attendance notice is the first item. Video conferencing will be used during this meeting in accordance with the Town Board of Somers video conferencing policy. The planning board will conduct the meeting at the Somers Townhouse located at 335 Route 202, Somers, New York. Chairman John Curry will be attending via Zoom from the Orchard Island Golf and Beach Club in Vero, Florida. The public has a right to attend the meeting at either location.
Thanks, Spence.
The first item tonight is the draft minute. So we've got, um, let's start with the first one is we have the. Do we do roll? Oh, I'm sorry, the roll. Sorry, roll. Chairman John Curry.
Here.
Deputy Chair Vicki Gannett.
Here.
Jack Mattis.
Here.
Bruce Prince.
Here.
Anthony Sutton.
Here.
Christopher Zabirdo.
Here.
Thank you for keeping us in line. Okay. So now we're going to start with the minutes. So we met twice in January. So the first minutes for consideration are the draft minutes of January 8th, 2025. Any comments? I know I had, think I had made one suggestion for that in email, and I think Jack might have sent emails. Is there anything, those changes have all been made? Any other comments or suggestions? Okay, I move that we approve the January 8th, 2025 minutes as were corrected by Nicole. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. And then we have the January 22nd minutes. Any comments or questions? I think I just had one. No, yes, I had one that I'd sent to you.
I think so.
Yes, yes. Anything else?
Well, good to me.
Comments? All right, I make a motion. We approve the January 22nd, 2025 minutes as were amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And the first item on our agenda after minutes is public hearing for 247 Route 100 LLC Rockledge Center, formerly Pine Wood Business Center. Application for amended site plan approval. Tax map 28.10-1-6.10. This is an application for an amended site plan approval for installation of a new driveway and area for an existing building. Driveway is to be screened by new tree plantings and soil is to be removed from the site in order to facilitate creation of proposed driveway and additional usable green space on site. The property is located at 247 Route 100 and is in an OLI, Office and Light Industry zoning district. Nicole, can we have publishing and posting information?
Sure. The legal notice was published in the Somers Record on January 30th, 2025. The adjoining property owners were notified via mail on January 24th, 2025. And the sign stating the date and location of the public hearing posted on the site on January 28th, 2025.
That's great, thank you. So the applicant, if you could introduce yourself for the record.
Hi, I'm Harrison Cook, owner and manager of Rockledge Center, 247 Route 100 here in Somers, New York. And just to refresh everyone's memory, we are here to, for the public hearing to consider the construction of an additional driveway here on the southern portion of Building A on the site for a tenant renew contracting and restoration. The driveway is there to allow them to store and load their trucks for their construction work that they're engaged in, primarily restoration work. So floods and fires and smoke damage. And it's a little under four, sorry, 3,000 or 4,000 square feet of new driveway to be constructed and a large amount of soil here to be removed from the property and leveled to make way for the driveway. The current hill, and it's a berm is what we've been calling it, has been there for some time and it's basically, it's an eyesore that sits between these two buildings and is an unusable rocky hilly berm. And our plan is to remove it and install this new drive as well as tree screening around it to, you know, make it look nicer. Yeah.
Do you have any comments from staff, planning?
No comments.
Can we just announce, though, the public postings, right, for the public hearing? Are we supposed to put that on the record or no?
We did.
We did that? Okay, okay.
We would in current issued a memo earlier this week based on an updated stormwater pollution prevention plan we have from the applicant from last week. It is, it's really some minor comments remaining about some additional information. Since this project is in the groundwater protection overlay district, while there's no new uses associated with this additional parking area, the town code does require preparation of a groundwater protection overlay, groundwater protection plan. And so that needs to be prepared and submitted by the applicant. The applicant addressed most of.
I have that prepared here, just so you know.
Thank you.
You didn't interrupt.
Wonderful. For this particular site, it's a pretty straightforward analysis. So I expect our review of that to be, to be brief. The, there are a couple of other items. Because this is in the east of Hudson watershed and disturbs more than 5,000 square feet, there is a requirement to obtain coverage under the general permit for stormwater. And then we had some minor questions on just making sure that the plans showed the connectivity between the proposed stormwater piping and the existing stormwater infrastructure, just to make sure that that was clear to, to the town in reviewing this in construction and to the board and to the public. Our last two comments, just to clarify, in our memo related to the board's option to add or to require the applicant to provide additional parking. This is the light gray shaded area on the left of the plan. That was part of the prior project approval as part of the site plan and is that the board's option to require the applicant to, to build that. Just had two, two comments on that if the board so chooses to require that. If the board does not, then our comments 16 and 17 aren't, aren't necessary to be responded to.
And I thought that we left it last time that we were going to allow the board to just reserve the right to construct it later as to try not to overconstruct parking and create more impervious surface than necessary.
I think, I think also we, we're gonna, we've opened a public hearing. We're gonna, I would like to have input from the board. But I think if the public was to say, oh, I can never find a parking spot right now, then we might revise that or revisit that initial thought that we had. So I keep an, I, one member keep an open mind and we want to hear from the public if anybody's here today. Was there anything else you wanted to say?
No, we've, we've had an open dialogue with the applicant's engineer. So we know that they're aware of our comments and how to address them.
Okay. My fellow board members, any comments or questions or? No?
Yeah. You know, it was an oversight that brought us to this point, fenced and then stopped. There was no review process or, or approval. And, and I do distinctly remember when we did our walkthrough that there was a, that you had directed that there be a fence put up on top of that berm because it was definitely a safety issue. And to the best of my knowledge, that has not been done. And I, I just don't, I don't really understand why that wasn't done and why while this matter is before us, you know, we're, we're trying to, to be very cooperative and work back and forth. And I don't think that that demonstrates cooperation.
I think that my recollection is that the applicant had expressed that the ground was so cold. We had that extreme colds that couldn't put a fence in like that. But they'd said there was something else they were putting up like.
We put up caution tape.
Yeah, it's on the ground.
It, it, it did fall on the ground, yes.
It's, it's, it's not there. There's nothing. And I, I have actually been through there a couple of times, particularly at, I guess for lack of a better term, dismissal time when, when the events are, and there are kids all over that property, meeting, you know, their, their rides and getting picked up and leaving. And I, it's just a concern of mine, but I think more, you know, again, it, I'm perplexed.
I, I agree because I think I was one who said step away from the, concerned about the height and, yeah.
It's a, it's a, what, 10-foot drop?
Probably, yeah.
Yeah.
At least.
Absolutely. I mean, we're committed to removing that as soon as we can and erecting a fence as soon as it's, you know, feasible. And, you know, the, the caution tape is, is a temporary solution at best.
It was not a solution. Just, you know, traffic cones, you know, some kind of fencing, you know, sawhorses, something in those lines, you know, if you, if you, we all discussed and agreed, I thought, that that was a definite safety issue when we were there. The other thing that I would really like everybody to consider is the fact that there's going to be some heavy machinery there pounding away at that ledge, I'm sure. I would make a condition of it that there's a, there's a construction fence that closes that area off to any kind of foot traffic.
You're making notes for the?
Yes.
Thank you. Thoroughly noted. Thank you. Good input. Any other thoughts you had, Tony, having been?
No.
John, I don't want to overlook you.
No, I just, Mike, I, I, I agree with Tony and, and speaking to you after the sidewalk. I, I can't see, I, I personally wouldn't want to close a public hearing until something better than yellow tape was put up.
I hear you. Okay. If that's all we have for board discussion right now, let me open this to the public. Is there anybody here from the public who'd like to speak on this application? Nope. Okay. Well, I think we can adjourn the public meeting until March. Applicant has some additional information to submit for your, your office's review, right, Steve? So there's that. You can maybe put in some additional effort.
Absolutely.
The signaling to everybody who's passing through that they should not be climbing on that berm or whatever you want to call it.
Yeah.
To the satisfaction of the board. And I think we could ask you to draft a resolution in anticipation that we can move forward at some point, hopefully next meeting, but we'll just see where we are.
Yes, we can do that.
So. And you'll include those most recent comments?
Yes, they'll be incorporated.
Okay. During construction?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments from my board members? Okay. All right, so we'll adjourn the meeting until March. Do we need a vote on that? No? I can, we can.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the.
For the draft resolution?
Yeah.
And the adjournment?
Yeah. And to draft a?
Yes.
Resolution to be prepared for the March meeting with the included stipulations that was discussed today.
I second that motion.
I agree with what you said.
Thank you, counsel.
This is Mike Toohey from April 11th. On myself, record.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So you've got some direction?
Yes, absolutely.
Seeing you and hearing about the fence.
Yes, we'll see you in March.
Thank you. Right. The next item is Anglefly. Come on up, Rich. So the next item tonight is going to be a, a public hearing for the Anglefly Preserve, Reese Park, preliminary site plan application, 1 Plum Brook Road, tax map 27.16-4. Applicant is proposing improvements to a portion of the Anglefly Preserve and Reese Park to construct and submit 1,050 linear foot road to connect Reese Park with Plum Brook Road and create approximately 36 new parking spaces. The property is located at 1 Plum Brook Road. Nicole, can we have publishing and posting?
Sure. The legal notice was published in the Somers Record on January 30th, 2025. The adjoining property owners were notified via mail on January 24th, 2025. And the sign stating the date and location of the public hearing was posted on the site on January 30th, 2025.
Rich, is there any, might like to make a presentation just to update everybody as where you are?
Sure. So good evening. For your record, Richard Williams with Inside Engineering. And we last appeared before you at your second meeting in January, at which point you scheduled a public hearing for this project. But to back up a little bit about the history, the town of Somers worked a ways back to acquire Anglefly from development. It's a large preserve located centrally in town and it forms the southern border to Reese Park. There was 14 acres slated for future park development. They were located farther south within Anglefly. And within the past couple of years, the town worked with the DEC in Westchester County to amend the interministerial agreement and swap the 14 acres that were located, again, farther south from the area we're going to be talking about, to an 11.3 acre piece of property that sits between Plum Brook Road and Reese Park. So I'm going to start to point to a map, just to get help, so everybody oriented. But on the drawing that we've brought with us, you have Plum Brook Road, which runs east-west, Route 139 Primrose Street, which runs north-south. Here you can see the southern border of Reese Park. This is the open field. This is Zion Church. You have the three existing tennis courts, parking lot, which I think everybody's familiar with, across the street from the library, and the playground area here. And the 11.3 acres that we're talking about is this piece of property right here. When you look at it in comparison to the original 14 acres that were slated to be developed, this property has a less, a lot less environmental constraints. And due to its contiguous nature to our existing Reese Park, which is our Central Park facility, it made a lot of sense to do that swap and was, was a really big win for the town. And I know the town put a lot of hard work into that. As part of looking at the development of this property, the town heard loud and clear that Reese Park really only has one entrance in and out of it. There is a secondary driveway that goes north through the right Reese Homestead and ultimately all the way up to Sunderland. But that's, you know, small access, you know, gravel access driveway. It's steeply sloping and it's not suitable for emergency vehicles. So hearing the concern of the fire department and, and others in town, the first part of this project is to construct an access road that connects the existing parking lot to Plum Brook Road. And we're just short of 400 feet to the intersection of Plum Brook. The board asked me last time, how does Park and Rec envision using this? It would be open predominantly throughout the year. It would probably be closed during summer camp season and potentially odd times throughout the year, depending on park usage. But other than that, it would remain open with the park. And again, it was to provide a secondary access. It's also there for when we have large events like our Fourth of July celebration, where, you know, traffic in, in the area becomes congested and there's really only one way in and out of the park. As far as the property itself, just to talk about environmental constraints, property slopes from north to south towards Plum Brook Road. The site was at one point developed with a residential property. I believe it was, it ceased occupation sometime around when Anglefly was being proposed as part of the development. I believe at one point there was consideration for a subdivision here and a couple of building lots. There is a DEC wetland located across the street from Plum Brook Road. We've had DEC on site to delineate that wetland and they are actually actively signing the DEC validation map. There is a water course that runs north to south and flows to a culvert that runs underneath Plum Brook, Plum Brook Road, that is on the western portion of the property and then crosses over the property line and onto our neighbor, the west property. We have, as part of designing the access, looked at keeping the new driveway away from the hard angle turn that comes farther west as you drive down Plum Brook. So if you come from 139 down Plum Brook, it makes a hard turn to the south. So we're trying to kind of cut the space in the middle, keeping separation from 139 as well as that intersection. We're about 490 feet to our westernmost property line. We also looked at trying to locate the intersection such that it's not in the DEC buffer, which does extend onto portions of the property. We have no development proposed within the DEC. I say buffer, but they technically call it an adjacent area. There, we have identified on the property area for phase two. I don't know what phase two is going to be and I, you know, talking to the town board, they don't either. This is slated for parkland. Obviously, any future improvements on the balance of the property have to involve all stakeholders, town residents, Park and Rec board. But as part of preparing our analysis of the property and designing stormwater system and planning for the future, we did push the road as far west as possible to maximize this space for future development. We did, in part of looking at stormwater, account for future impervious surfaces just to have a baseline for the purposes of SEAKER. On the northern end of the project, I think everybody's familiar right now, we have six existing tennis courts. There are three on the east and another pair of three on the west. As part of this first phase, it's proposed to remove the three tennis courts to the west to allow for the construction of four pickleball carts, the connection of the access road, and additional parking. Right now, we have 36 additional parking spaces shown. As far as stormwater, we have a bio retention filter located at the bottom of the property so that we can catch the runoff from the road. This has been sized, again, assuming a future pervious surface allocation, just so that we're not building infrastructure twice. And then we have a permeable pavement parking lot. We spent some time last meeting talking about maintenance. That was one thing the county also pointed out as well, that when you do have porous pavement, while it is a green infrastructure practice recognized by DEC, it does come with maintenance requirements. And that would be similar to whatever maintenance has to be done to the existing parking lot, which is also a permeable pavement parking lot.
So just to make sure that I'm understanding, we're basically looking at an approval of the phase one.
Correct.
Site plan. And when the town moves to phase two, which would involve scheduling activities, so to speak, and designing what would happen within that dotted, the dotted line segment of this parcel that we're looking at today, we would come, there would be a site plan, there would be another public hearing to consider activities and impacts that would fall from that, correct?
That's correct. And we'll probably even process before we get to you in order to determine what that programming looks like.
Okay. Just wanted to ask, just to clarify that this is not the last word on impacts from the site?
No.
Okay.
And procedurally, maybe just to end with where we're at procedurally.
Please.
So the town board has declared their intent to be lead agency. Circulations went out. I believe they've declared themselves lead agency. And right now they are reviewing the environmental assessment form and we are hoping they'll make an environmental determination in their upcoming meeting.
Tomorrow?
Hopefully, maybe it's, I think, going to push to the following meeting.
It may, it may get pushed to March 6th.
To March, okay.
That being said, coming here tonight, we also recognize that there's not much further action this board can take until a determination is reached by the town board. So tonight, we're, you know, we're thankful that you started the public hearing process. We're interested in gaining any feedback from the public that we can and we're really here to listen.
Okay. Because I think our, given the schedule, we envision opening the hearing, getting input from the public, at least having a preliminary sense of what the public input is and forwarding that to the town board so they're aware of it. And then adjourning the meeting and welcoming further input from the public at our March 12th, Wednesday, March 12th meeting.
Correct.
Planning board. So staff, planning and engineering, have any comments?
So, Rich, thanks for, for covering kind of procedural aspects. For the town board, this is a project that is a little bit unusual in that the town board, because they're funding this particular application under SEAKER. That's the State Environmental Body Review Act. They've taken what is the lead agency role in coordinating the environmental review. And as Richard mentioned, they declared their notice of intent to act as lead agency. That came before you, your board, you had no objection. There were a couple of other agencies that also responded. Nobody objected to the town board acting as lead agency. So they are coordinating the environmental review. They're considering the environmental assessment form and the other technical reports that have been prepared as part of the submission. Rich is correct. Because the town board hasn't finished the environmental review means that you cannot act until that happens. So we're hopeful that at either the March, at the March 6th meeting, the town board would have enough information that they could conclude the environmental review. And that would allow you, your board, at the subsequent meeting in March 12th, to then reopen the public hearing, consider any additional public comments. And then if you so desire, you could close the public hearing and then move on the application. So that's procedurally where the town stands with respect to this particular application.
And the town is, Parks and Rec is working with the county. I saw we received a memo from the county planning board dated February 10th, which was reviewing the town's obligation to coordinate with them as well?
Yes, yes.
Steve, any?
Nope. The town engineering mission, Steve Woolfall, I know has been engaged in this and has been conducting the primary review from a technical basis on behalf of the town.
Okay. All right. With that, I'd like to invite any members of the public who would like to engage in public comment, ask questions or provide information. Oh, I'm sorry, board comments. Sorry. Board comments first.
All right. The, just a question. What is, what does Reese Park think about the elimination of three of their tennis courts? Has that been discussed with them? And, I mean, I understand the additional pickleball courts, which is, is probably needed. But that makes basically just three tennis courts. Well, they used to have six. What is the usage of that and are they concerned?
So as part of developing this plan, we're meeting regularly with the Park and Rec Director, Steve Ralston, as Steve Robbins mentioned, Steve Woolfall. So we are making sure to get Park and Rec input. When we had six tennis courts, we also didn't have the luxury of any tennis courts at the schools. So the schools would use these tennis courts for their activities as well. The town believes that three tennis courts will be sufficient based on the new courts that have been built and the school having courts on their own property at this point. And the town also recognizes that there's a growing demand for pickleball to be.
The, are the, are the court tennis courts at the schools open to the public or just for school use? Do you know that?
I don't know for a fact one way or another, but I do know that the schools' need for these courts, which created demand, isn't going to be there anymore.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
I do.
Yes, Jack?
As far as that roadway and its surface, we know you're using a pervious surface. We've discussed that last month. The question that I have is, there's a retention basin at the bottom, at the end of the road. What's going to direct the flow of water from the top of that roadway that does not go down into the surface if there's a heavy rain? What's going to direct it to that retention basin, if anything?
That's a great question. First, the only portion that's going to be porous pavement is the parking lot at the top. The road itself is going to be a traditionally constructed road with just standard asphalt. Even when we do porous pavement, you still need a collection and conveyance system as a backup. So for this porous pavement parking lot up here, at the low points, we still do have traditional catch basins. So if there is overflow to your point or the capacity to let the water is exceeded, you have a backup system. So if there is overflow to your point or the capacity to let the water is exceeded, you have a backup system in place. Along the road, which again will be traditional asphalt, we do have a traditional stormwater collection conveyance system consisting of catch basins spaced appropriately based on the slope of the road. So we'll tighten the spacing as the road gets steeper, and then we'll spread them out a little farther as the road gets flatter. We have worked hard to try and make this access road comply as close as possible to town spec. It'll be twenty-four feet wide. The vertical alignments will meet town spec. We did reduce that first horizontal radius so that it is slightly less than the hundred and fifty feet required for a standard town road. I don't remember the number off the top of my head, it's greater than seventy-five, I think it's closer to a hundred. And we did run turning maneuvers for fire department vehicles just to make sure they would work.
Thank you.
And John, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, Rich, you know, having worked fourth of July with the Lions Club for years, I just want to hope and make sure that there's adequate lighting on that road, because as you know, after fourth of July, it's dark. And it's going to be, I'm sure at least half the exit is going to be that way out.
For phase one, we are going to have basically a construction drawing level meeting with Park and Rec and Steve Woolfall. One of the questions we have is whether or not that road will be lit in phase one. Right now, we have not provided lights along the alignment of the road. So if lighting was needed during the fourth of July event, temporary lighting could be provided for that event. Otherwise, the road would be closed when the park is closed. So initially, right now, we don't have lighting down it. We're also trying to be cost conscious with this first phase.
But wouldn't it be smarter to do the trenching now when you're doing the road construction?
We, we agree, and we're talking about doing that just to make sure the lines are dropped. Also, to make sure that, yeah, so we have power moving forward. It's just whether or not we install light poles in this first phase or not.
But the, but the trenching will be in.
That's the intent, but we have to finalize that based on budgeting and final costs.
And I think if I remember correctly, at one of the last meetings, somebody suggested the possibility of sidewalks. I'm assuming that would be the time to do it now, too.
Sidewalks would come in a later phase when we know the programming. Again, without knowing what the future programming is, looking like we don't want to box ourselves into too many corners. So in this first phase, no, there wouldn't be sidewalks.
But how, how rich, how cost effective could that be that you wouldn't put sidewalks in now? I mean, even just for the foot traffic that might be created by people coming off of Plum Brook Road and walking up to Reese Park along that road, now you've got people walking in the roadway.
There is a passive walking trail that exists now that is part of the Angle Fly system that connects to Reese Park and through. That rail system is going to be maintained. I, I do.
Rich, how can that be cost effective? I mean, the last time we talked, you know, you said you thought you might be pushing off trenching for lights, and I understand that, you know, there's, there's no real consensus on what that, what's going to be done with that area, but it, it's almost like you're going to go back and do things over, you know, you're going to go back and, and the sidewalks are going to have to be right alongside that road. The, 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 the lights would need to be there if there's pedestrians walking on the sidewalks. I would even encourage, you know, you to check with the police chief to see if he wants one of those police phone boxes there, because that's a, that's a long, lonely walk. That's a thousand feet from the top to the bottom. Just, you know, from a point of view.
You know, Tony, not to cut you off, but I, I get, I absolutely get your point, right? And, and we as planners sort of plan, and we, we want to try to make this as efficient as possible. But I understand your point that we really don't know what they intend to do with this in its totality, right? When the project's done. Right now, the way I see this, and maybe no one's really calling it out, but I will, is we have a problem when we have special events in the park of egress and, you know, and traffic and congestion. And so right now, this could only be for July fourth, this project, right? And so why would we put in sidewalks? Why would we put in lighting if this is just a means of suppressing traffic and at the same time adding some pickleball courts and, and getting it to a point where, when now there's funding for additional projects, right? Because now we got to fork all this funding upfront to, 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 to get it finished, right? From plan to, you know, to, to execution. Whereas taking the baby bites and baby steps and getting the infrastructure laid in, the idea and concept of trenching, I get, makes sense. But to your point, there could be a budget restraint on that. So I'm going to say that I'm going to trust our town board and the budgeting folks behind the town board and how this is being laid out, that this might be the way that we should go. Very slow, very conservative. Let's get it where we can at least get all the approvals to get this in place so that we can construct a road for its intent right now. And then when phase two, when we make a determination on what we're going to do with inside that dotted line, you know, maybe we'll put a kid's playground in there or something like that. And then now we will have to discuss lighting, because now that project would be funded as a playground. And now we can add all these extra accoutrements. Because the more we ask for now, the limited that the town is going to be in allowing it to happen, in my opinion. And as someone who lives near Reese Park and Angle Fly, and I see the traffic congestion that occurs in July fourth and Lions events, I think getting this fundamental project underway as cost efficient and as safe and as environmentally friendly and, you know, administratively sound way as possible is, is what we need to do now and allow this to expand organically. Somers is not going anywhere. We've been here two hundred and fifty years, we'll be here another two hundred and fifty years more, and we can add to it when there's money to do it. That's my take on it.
And here's what I would just say as far as a parent in town, whose kids go to Reese Park. I hate when my kids run across the parking lot. I love it when they run across the sidewalks. I am a big advocate of sidewalk and sidewalks.
Me too, obviously.
And I know this board is as well. If you, if you ask me what good planning would be here, right now, I don't have a destination point to bring a sidewalk. I'm going to bring a sidewalk to Plum Brook Road where the, where the destination point would be a walking trail that then goes south through the woods. Right now, we have that connectivity through an existing woodland trail.
Yeah, but are, are you going to add people to walk through the woods after the fireworks display at Reese Park?
So.
At time of night?
I don't know that I would want to be encouraging people to walk up and down Plum Brook Road at night. And I don't know that I would want to bring them there with a sidewalk to dump them on Reese Park and say, go four hundred feet that way and four hundred feet that way in the dark, to then hit a state road or a blind curve. This is not, right now, and even in a future phase, once you know what that programming looks like, I don't know that we would want to encourage anything but that woodland trail through Plum Brook, because there's no destination. I would want sidewalk connectivity between whatever programming was here and back to the park to bring people to a safe place. That's, that's just would be my recommendation.
Yeah, and I, I, again, I see that logic, right? And I think that that's kind of where we're at, at the moment, but.
So, so from your point of view, if, if, if those were turned into some kind of playing fields down there, you'd have to put parking in down there, correct?
Correct. And at that point, you know, if that were an option, it would be parking. You would want it anyway.
Right.
Right, you know, just to be able to have parking proximate to the field, if there was a field, you would want sidewalk connectivity anyway back to the park, because again, you know, you have restroom facilities, concession stands, you know, it's, it's a park, it wants internal connectivity. And then if there's a destination outside the park, you do want external connectivity, but I, you know, I'm generally careful where I funnel people.
Then I, I have a question. You mentioned there was a land swap, thirteen acres for, and so this is what we, what, at, at any point, did we have to do any zoning changes with that land swap?
No. When, when Angle Fly was originally created, there were portions of the park allocated to certain agencies. Because remember, an Angle Fly was originally an interminable agreement that involved funding from the state, funding from the city.
Right.
Funding from the county.
County, yeah.
Right, and certain portions of the park were allocated to each of those agencies with individual uses. Steve, I think your office might have been a part of this with the town, so if I misspeak, please jump in. You guys, you guys paved the way for all this.
You're doing great.
So I think it was recognized that the area that was allocated for potential athletic fields, parks, wasn't in the most ideal location for the residents of Somers. It's, you know, farther south along Plum Brook Road. It's obviously part of Angle Fly, but it's, it's actually in this portion down in here where.
Kind of behind the nursing home there, that side?
In between the nursing home and, and where we are, on that, on that piece that runs north, south after that first bend.
Right.
And it made a lot more sense to bring connectivity, right? You know, everyone that I know outside the town that comes to Reese Park says, wow, it is amazing that you guys have such a centralized park facility between all your sports, your library, your programming. And, you know, to, to continue that connectivity and not have a field over here and a field over here. It's, it made a lot of sense. Didn't, didn't require zoning, required a modification to the I M A.
Okay.
And I think the state was the, the last holdout on that.
Any other comments from the board members? Any follow up questions, John?
No, I just, I mean, I, I can understand the, the, the theory and the thoughts behind, behind the sidewalk. I understand that very well. I just think this would be the time to make sure that there's trenching and piping in there for electoral and, and conduit for the lights, because I, I think the lights are going to be very important. If, even if you open up down below and eventually there's, there's fields for, for softball, a lot of those games are at night, or most of them are, so I'm just thinking that's the future. I, I, I don't think it would be a bad idea to put at least conduit in there now for the, for the lights, future lights.
We agree. We're meeting tomorrow at two o'clock to finalize all these details.
Okay.
I agree too. If we at least get that in there, even if we can't get the lights on the road, I understand that. But if, if we're opening it up, let's, but that would be my thought as well.
Yeah, I mean, I've mentioned that we all agree that at least at the minimum, trenching preferably with conduit in there for future, you know, cable laying would be ideal. And I think the most cost efficient before we put the cart before the horse.
I agree with you.
Okay. So if we've heard all from the board now, I can open up to public comment from the comment. Public comment from the public. Is there anybody here who would like to speak on this application? Please come up and identify yourself.
No, one at a time, you had your hand up.
And one at a time, and just if you could state your name for the record.
My name is Larry Lewis. I live on thirteen Plum Brook Road. Okay, with my wife Jane.
Thank you.
It's for a relatively short time compared to the length of time Somers has been here. We've been here for twenty-five years, one tenth of the time. Have several thoughts. And so does my wife. Less than six months ago, northern Westchester faced the worst drought we have had in decades. We could not have outdoor barbecues and in November would not have a fire in our fireplace for fear of any spark that could ignite our woods which border Reese Park. The road that you are proposing would give the public access to the Plum Brook Woods, setting up a rubbish crisis, late night car traffic, and more dangerously, a direct fire hazard. Recently, whole communities were burned to the ground in California, and in our own area, five thousand acres burned down the woods next to Greenwood Lake, New York, resulting in the death of a young firefighter and the evacuation of many families. What is your plan to pick up the trash along this new road, stop late night traffic, and more importantly, safeguard the Plum Brook Woods from the danger of fire, which could easily burn down our homes on Plum Brook Road and quickly spread to Otha and the Sunderland neighborhoods? While the Muscoot Reservoir has recovered from the fall's drought, the Amawak Reservoir is still alarmingly low. How are you going to keep the woods clean and secure at night? Most importantly, what fire safety measures are you taking before you give the public direct access to the woods? I, I left out a, an identifying fact. I am the garbage collector for the section of Plum Brook Road where this road would be. I go up and down Plum Brook Road with a big plastic bag periodically, more often in the spring after the snow has melted, and collect the garbage. Where does the garbage come from? It comes from the kids who drive up and down Plum Brook Road. Where do they come from? The high school. There's nothing terrible about this. I've been doing it for twenty-five years, but it's just a fact of life. And yes, in the garbage or cigarette packages, kids smoke. And if we go through a dry period again, which may or may not happen in my lifetime, I'm an old man. That risk exists, and when you run a road through a wooded area, okay, that multiplies the risk. Now, the proposed road would not be a second exit and entrance to the park. It would be a third. As briefly glossed over a few moments ago, there's an unused paved but plowed, plowed by the town road. It exists, it runs from Primrose Drive, that's the name of the road that comes into the park. Okay. Between the Parks and Rec Department and the library, and it goes north between the dugout on Pony Field, that's what the kids call it. I don't know if that's an official name for that field. And the batting cages. Batting cages. The, the kids practice batting and there have been two chain link cages there for them to practice their batting in, which is fine. A gate across the road prevents the kids from easily walking up the road to the generally unoccupied, but owned by the town nevertheless, Wright Reese Homestead. The road then branches to the left to one thirty-nine, and yes, it's narrow. And the fire department probably couldn't get their vehicles through that easily, unless the trees are trimmed back. But that road also goes straight ahead toward the police department and the dog catcher, and it opens up onto Sunderland, and it's nice and wide. Okay, that, I was up on that road today. Okay, nicely plowed. How could a plow get in there? If big vehicles can't, big vehicles can. Okay. Removal of the chain from the gate for the Fourth of July celebration could make this route could usable. There's a chain on the gate. Why is the chain on the gate? We put it there. The town of Somers put it there, keep those kids out of Wright Reese Homestead. Good. Perhaps permission could be obtained from the historical society to remove the chain with the few days per year when the park is overly utilized and parking shuttle buses are necessary. I left out another identifying fact. I'm a tennis player. I don't play pickleball. But I certainly do use Reese Park. I've logged several hundred miles on the trails around Reese Park, around the big ball field. I'm a runner. Converting the basketball courts to parking would save one or two tennis courts and perhaps diminish the problems of the impermeable paving and drainage versus permeable paving and associated maintenance costs, which I know you've discussed at a prior meeting. Another area that could be considered for parking is the open field behind the Lockberry. And then two more concerns. There were concerns regarding the line of sight for vehicles making a left turn from Plum Brook Road onto one thirty-nine. I know you discussed this at a prior meeting. The proposed road would certainly increase the number of vehicles making this turn. And many of the drivers. And many of the drivers. Would be less experienced high school children. Has any consideration been given to decreasing the speed limit? On one thirty-nine from the schools down to Plum Brook Road to twenty miles an hour or so. Okay, that's another thought, okay? This, of course, would not be necessary if the existing road could be utilized. As there is no line of sight problem from Sunderland, where it would, it opens out, okay? And then my last concern is. The cost of the proposed road project. I haven't seen that listed anywhere. But I know that the cost of taking the, the chain off the fence. For the July fourth celebrations is very low. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Was somebody else who wanted to speak? And again, if you could please identify yourself and microphone for the record.
Uh, John Deluna, fifteen Plum Brook, um. Similar concerns of what my neighbor just mentioned of the traffic. Um, another thing that wasn't brought up is. Plum Brook Road already has like some of the other roads in town that you know, like I think it's Brick Hill. That it's the, a cut through and dealing already with a lot of trucks that shouldn't go there and maybe even. School buses all day. It's just, there is a sightline issue when you come out of the first sharp turn. And I'm sure the town board or what department, are they gonna do a traffic study? Mentioning what the, the engineer said about the gate, I believe Reese Park is closed that night, if I'm correct. Or you're, you know, finding facts, so would this gate get closed? Um, another concern. Is, I think the lighting, the town of Somers has a specific ordinance about casting the light upward. Like you have to use certain lights to keep that more like a nature preserve and. Just doing some quick math and probably reiterate that, the board, thank you too. You guys brought up a lot of issues that we have. Talk about efficiency and the safety of the kids, like the sidewalks would lead nowhere and. You're gonna use twenty-four thousand square feet roughly. Engineer mentioned the road's twenty-four feet wide, thousand feet long. Use a half an acre just to make a road. The parking for thirty-six spaces by code is usually like nine thousand. Seem to be a better use for phase two, whatever that is, to save that land since we already lost three acres in the deal. And maybe rework the main entrance to flow better for the one or two events. So it's just some questions I'm throwing out there. Um, besides the wetlands you have to cross, steep slopes. The impervious pavement with all the maintenance on your other meeting that was very good, informative, the one in January that you have to vacuum the thing. And the safety, I had the highway department years ago, right in front of my neighbor's house, they had to put all the boulders out there. Cuz the kids would run through that corner and I lost two mailboxes, but thank you for your work and we look forward to answers and.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else here who would like to speak on the issue? Okay, Rich, you've been taking notes. Okay.
Discuss, we'll get answers, and this is the type of feedback we're looking for.
Excellent, all right, so, um. I'm gonna make two motions, first that we, um, adjourn the public hearing to March. Uh, our next meeting is Wednesday, March twelfth, seven thirty. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, I'm also gonna request, uh, that we, um. Ask staff to draft a resolution of approval of site plan review for discussion at that meeting. Um, I don't know where we'll be, we'll see what kind of feedback we get, we'll get additional questions, but at least I'd like to have something in hand that we can look at. Because we are getting a lot of valuable comment and it may sort of change the shape of what we're looking at a little bit. So I'd like to make a motion to ask staff to draft a resolution of approval for consideration and discussion. At the March twelfth meeting, may I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, okay, so I think you've got some direction, you've got your meeting tomorrow and, um, you'll be in contact.
Yeah, do our homework.
All right, thank, we'll see you next, thank.
We, well, so, uh, this gentleman recommended this other road. Uh, can we get some kind of a layout or some kind of a map to show us? Uh, where that road actually goes, whether it's a town, town map or whatever. So we could.
If it was on the map that we received last month in preparation for the meeting. It did show that road running behind Van Tassel.
Yeah.
So it is there.
No, there is, there is absolutely a connection, you know, as, as I mentioned, it may be too quickly, that goes, um, from the main entrance. All the way up, um, all the way up to Sunderland, um, and we'll, you know, we'll get some info on that.
Call it out, thank you, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
And then just a recommendation to the residents of Plum Brook. Um, you may also wanna voice, is there a public hearing at the town board regarding this for secret?
No, it's not a public hearing.
That is not, they're not gonna have one.
No, they're not gonna have a public hearing, um, they, they'll be discussing the environmental aspects because they're doing the environmental review.
Right.
But I, the, the, one of the benefits of this process is that you are holding the public hearing, a, a public hearing. On the proposed action, so these comments will be forwarded to.
Okay, so they will.
To the town, absolutely.
All right.
Town board for their considerations, they have that before.
I don't want them to feel like they just voiced into an empty, uh.
No.
Cause we, it's not a debate, we, we, we don't debate your points, we take them in and then we do some research on them and then we, we publish that, but. I didn't want you guys feeling like you're leaving empty handed, you, you came prepared and we do appreciate that. There are open sessions of the town board that you can give general public comments, not specific to anything. And if you have an opinion on this project, I believe you have your right to, to voice that there. So that may be, uh, another tool for you to, to speak freely about how you feel about it. I just wanted to let you know that, cuz there are multiple entities within the town that are involved in this process. It's not, doesn't solely fall on us, we're actually a very small component at this point for it all. So, continue with your, uh, concerns, uh, throughout the town, not just the planning.
And also, if you can, come back to our next meeting because we're gonna ask Rich to respond to the comments that we heard tonight. And we also welcome additional comments that we'll get at that point in time. It's an iterative process as we go along. We, we get questions, the purpose of a public hearing is for us to gather additional information. Now, I, my colleagues have heard me say that, they've said it before and I'll say it till the end of time, that really is the reason. And, and that's what's happened tonight, so I, I thank everybody for their time.
Thank you.
And our last item on tonight's agenda is Saint Luke's Church Site Plan Amendment Shed. Um, thank you. This is, uh, three thirty-one Route one hundred, tax max seventeen point five dash one dash ten point five. Applicant is proposing installing a ten foot by twelve foot storage shed to be used for storage of seasonal clothing and inventory. That is sold at the thrift shop. The property is located at three thirty-one Route one hundred and is in the Business Historic Preservation District. And applicant, if you could identify yourself for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Dale Schweitzer for Saint Luke's Church Somers. Uh, we are asking for permission to put in an additional shed for the overflow of items for the Saint Luke's thrift store. Uh, it would be located right next to the one that is currently there. It's a prefab shed, ten by twelve. Will be put on a gravel base with a four by four frame to keep the gravel in place. Pretty much it, it's very simple to shed to hold old clothes and dishes and.
Seasonal items, I think, as it was described, seasonal items, I.
Seasonal items, that's correct.
Yes, okay, um, planning.
Yes, so, uh. Mrs. Schweitzer and, and Saint Luke's is here because of the code, um, as he indicated, this is in the Business Historic Preservation District. In conferring with the building inspector, um, a shed is an accessory use. And the installation of a shed requires a site plan, uh, approval, uh, so that is the reason that, um, they're here tonight. Uh, the application, um, was circulated to the, um. Uh, the committee, it's the, uh, BHP Technical Committee, they, they're supposed to do a pre-application review. Um, it was circulated and I requested that the, um, from the technical committee, given the de minimis nature of. Uh, the proposed action, that, um, they waive the, um, the pre-application conference. I think it's, this is a fairly straightforward application. The, um, the matter, because of code, it's been referred to, uh, the town board. Um, so if, uh, there are a couple of things that we're requesting, one is that you would waive the, uh, site plan requirements. Uh, the second is that you would waive the public hearing. Um, and then you would, uh, if you wanted to act on the matter, that you could do so with a confirmatory resolution. With one of the conditions being that the town board, because they're a referral agency and they don't meet until tomorrow night. That there be no objections from the town board. I don't suspect that there will be. Um, but this is a, a similar situation to what you had with the, the yoga studio, you recall? Where you were meeting one night and then the town board was meeting on the, the subsequent night. Um, and as long as there's no objection from the town board, then, um, you could approve, prove it and have the, the resolution. Um, prepared and then signed, and then they could move forward with their project.
Okay, um. Steve, do you have any, or any, I just wanted to hear if Steve has any comments for, trying to follow the list.
No, we don't.
On this application, okay, um, board discussion.
Okay, uh, while I have no problem whatsoever with putting that storage shed there at Saint Luke's. I will object because you have a parking, you have two part handicap parking spots. At the left side of the parking area as you approach the shop and the shed will be just to the right of that.
If I. Uh, yes, there is a current shed, it'll be to the right of the.
Right, if you park in those handicap spots and open your car door and step out. There are depressions, tires that have settled that paving.
Okay.
And there is a danger there.
Okay.
And I think that needs to be remedied, so, you know, I understand the donations. And cars coming in to make donations, but I think it's important to keep it safe enough.
So, just so I'm understanding.
Yeah, of course.
Saying you're against the storage shed.
No, I have no problem with the stor-
Oh, or you're just recommending that we have that.
Right, you need P, need.
I think they're, they're, they're working on a resolution to try and repair the parking lot.
Good.
But it's a church and we have to, you know, going through the diocese.
No question, it's a great.
But they are working on it. It, it has been brought up, there's a few spots in the parking area that need to be repaired. And we're doing the best we can to get it taken care of.
Question, the, um. I, I see where the, I know where the shed is located, but I'm, I'm trying to figure out where your shed is gonna be.
Right to the right of the one that's there, the yellow shed that is near the thrift store. There, it would be right next to it, there would be a.
So it'd be on the side.
On the side of it.
The parking lot or the UPS store, that parking lot.
It would be, I, I'm not really sure about that. It's between the yellow shed and the Saint Francis Garden, right there. Um, when you're facing the thrift store.
Yeah.
Parking lot, it's on the right-hand side.
Yeah.
Would be on the right-hand side of the shed that is currently there and only about ten inches away from it, so that the water can drain from both pitches.
Yeah, that would be, that would be on the direction towards the, the foot, that other parking lot for, uh. The town center or wherever they call it, the, uh, I, I understand where you're talking.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions from board members?
Good.
John, any comments or questions?
No, I, I, I need to recuse myself, I'm a member of the church and I'm also on the vestry.
Okay. Um, so we have three suggestions. One that we waive site plan requirements, one that we might, uh, waive the public hearing and the other. Um, a resolution, shall we go through them one at a time? Okay, so, um, I'm gonna make a motion that we waive the site plan requirements for this application. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second item, um, I'm gonna make a motion that we waive the public hearing, uh, for this application. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna make a motion that we. Approve the site plan and direct staff to prepare a confirmatory resolution for chairman's signature. On the contingency that we do not receive a memo from the town board raising an objection. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, I think with that, we have completed everything we can complete. So we await, uh, the, the silence from the town board.
Okay.
Now, do you need to send them, you are already, the applicant is appearing before the town, we need to send them a memo, ask them for?
No, the, the, no, the, um, the matter was formally referred to.
Okay.
The town board.
All right.
Um, and so, uh, I'll be at the meeting tomorrow night, uh, but it's just, I'm, I'm assuming that they're going to get, when they get to it, they'll say they have no objection.
Okay, that'll be fine. At that point, if you work on the memo, I'll coordinate Wendy and.
Yes.
We'll get my signature on.
Very good.
The resolution, I should say, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very.
I should attend that meeting tomorrow?
You don't have to.
I don't have to, okay, thank you, thank you.
Right.
Good luck.
Okay, so, um, with that, I think we finished everything tonight, so I move we adjourn our meeting. The next planning board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, March twelfth, twenty twenty-five at seven thirty PM. Do I have a second?
To adjourn the meeting, if you hadn't, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.